Hello, and welcome to this candidate debate sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Marin County. I'm Dennis Freeman with the League of Women Voters, and also with us today is Margie Eller as our timekeeper. The candidates with us today are running for a four-year term for three seats on the Larkspur City Council. The candidates are Kevin Harrow, Dan Helmer, Daniel Kuntzer, and Catherine Way. The candidates have been invited to make opening statements of two minutes, and we will start with Kevin.
Thanks very much. And I want to thank the League of Women Voters this morning for sponsoring this event today. It's a terrific opportunity. Again, my name is Kevin Harrow, and I'm running for one of the three open positions on the Larkspur City Council. I'm not in this race just because I can. I already have a demanding professional life as an environmental attorney and a busy personal life as one of two working parents raising a beautiful 12-year-old daughter. I know it will be a challenge to continue managing those responsibilities while being on the council, but I believe it's important to try. I have lived in Marin County for over 25 years and in Larkspur's Greenbray community for over 10. I place a high value on the community's suburban, small-town character, but at the same time, I worry about growing pressures for development that could affect the community in very negative ways. As a member of the Larkspur Planning Commission, I have seen recent proposals for high-density land uses that are more intense than any we have seen in our community for many years. Some of those proposals focus on the neighborhoods in and around Greenbray and Larkspur Landing. This is a serious concern of mine. Greenbray is a unique part of the city of Larkspur. We make up over 45% of the city's total population, even though we are physically separated from the rest of the city by Cortumadera Creek. We send our kids to different schools than the rest of the city, and we share unclear boundaries with the unincorporated part of Marin County. The only Greenbray resident currently on the council is Brad Marsh, and he is not running for another term. As the one Greenbray resident who is running, I believe I am in the best position to effectively voice our neighborhood's concerns and represent its interests. At the same time, I am not running for office just to be a neighborhood spokesperson. The challenges facing Greenbray are the same ones facing our city as a whole. I believe I have the background, skills, and assertiveness to advocate effectively on behalf of our entire community, and I hope to have your support this November. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Next will be Dan Helmer.
Good morning, and thank you to the League for hosting this debate. I've had the good fortune of living in the city of Larkspur, raising a family for the last 27 years. Also, part of living in Larkspur has been the opportunity to take part in community service. The character of the community of Larkspur is really based on one of everybody working together and showing our kids how all the men and women in the community can work together to solve problems. I've had the great fortune of serving on the city council for four terms since 1992, and as many people know, in Marin, it takes a decade or more quite often to get anything done. So it's been a great experience for me, serving in Larkspur on the Planning Commission and then on the city council, and serving as mayor for four times during my council terms. So my background and experience in working with not only the different communities in Larkspur, but with the adjacent communities and these towns and cities in Marin, to do the various things that we need to do together to work on our issues and resolve our problems of transportation, public safety, and our infrastructure problems. Most of those service issues are handled through joint powers authorities of all the towns and cities working together, as opposed to each town and city providing its own. Quite often, except for public safety such as fire, the communities are all working together to provide things to ratepayers and taxpayers. So the experience of working together among the various towns and cities is invaluable on the city council, and it's one of the great lessons I've had while serving the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Next candidate.
I'm Daniel Kuntzer, also running for Larkspur City Council. After a full career as a financial analyst, I chose to leave the financial industry and orient myself towards civic duties as well as writing projects. Active in community service, I focused on education. My writing examines U.S. immigration policies, and I recently completed a book on the topic. Larkspur is a small town, but it sits at the confluence of a series of issues combining predictably municipal concerns with those of regional and even global scope. There are four areas, I believe, worthy of emphasis. One, community development -- I'm sorry, community investment. Many of Larkspur's roads are in need of repair, and we should get to them promptly, but I also favor urgent seismic retrofit of City Hall and a community center housing a new public library. Two, municipal finance. True to Larkspur's tradition of prudent fiscal management, we should consider opportunities for raising a modest amount of long-term capital while interest rates are low. Three, preservation of Larkspur's cohesive character. Here, I favor an integrated approach to congestion that includes public transit, a continued embrace of the middle class in Larkspur, and a circumspect approach to regional development, including along the Greenbray 101 corridor. And four, rising sea levels. This is Larkspur's global issue. We are right in the crosshairs of climate change. A proactive city council is important to determining what measures can and should be programmed. I bring to the Larkspur City Council an analytical mindset respectful of detail and long experience applying it. At the same time, my allegiance to the community is evident in my community service, including as a trustee of the Larkspur Library and as a member of the Citizens Advisory Committee. Many thanks to my peers and to the League of Women Voters for this debate today, and I look forward to your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. And the next candidate will be Catherine Way.
Good morning. My name is Catherine Way. I'm also running for Larkspur City Council, and I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for this morning opportunity to express our views and to have the voters get to know who we are. It's a valuable community service, so thank you very much for that. I am a Bay Area native, chose to move to Larkspur 10 years ago with my family to relocate from San Francisco, and we did that because we really fell in love with Larkspur. It's a jewel of a town with a unique character and the virtues and the values that I respect for my family. And we also were very interested in its sense of livability and its excellent public schools. Both of my daughters attended Redwood High School because we really saw that as their opportunity to get to see what it's like to live in a community like Larkspur. So when we moved here eight years ago, I jumped right into the community. I got very involved immediately with things in my neighborhood as far as disaster preparation, which then turned into a more comprehensive city disaster council. I joined the search and rescue team. I joined the Redwood High School Foundation as the president to raise money for our schools because I really care about the town. I see myself as being able to be the next generation of a Larkspur leader who will bring us into the next century. In 2008, Larkspur celebrated its centennial, and now we're looking at the opportunities ahead for the next 100 years. I've been approached by many people since I moved to this town to step up to the role of being the community leader who brings together all the diverse elements of what make up Larkspur and Greenbray, from our school communities to our neighborhoods to all of our business community, and I see myself as being that person who will be able to unite so much of what makes up Larkspur. I'd like to focus on several things, and I know we'll have more of an opportunity today to talk about that, but I'm very interested in Larkspur's future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Catherine. And now for the fun part, the questions. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to answer the question, and we will be starting with Dan Helmer and then rotating. The first question. Which are the most important issues for the Larkspur City Council to address, and what makes you uniquely qualified for the council compared to the other candidates running? Dan?
Well, most every issue with respect to services or programs provided by the city of Larkspur, at least in this environment, involves economics issues, budgeting, and especially looking to the future in terms of liabilities the city faces on pension and healthcare obligations. The fiscal environment of the city continues to get more complicated each year. Certainly, fiscal issues are at the top of the list of priorities of both problems and opportunities that the city council will face. Public safety is right at an equal position with respect to that, and integrally tied to the economics issue identified earlier. So providing the highest quality of service, especially in the public safety arena, as well as balancing our budgets are very high on the list of priorities. And then providing for maintenance and improvement of our infrastructure, such as our roads and bridges, is an ongoing task of the city council and our public works staff. Also, we have issues with respect to maintaining and improving our historic City Hall and community facilities, such as our library. So there are short- and long-term issues that are right at the top of the city council's list of assignments this year.
Great. Thank you, Dan. And if any candidates wish me to repeat the question, I'd be more than happy to. Daniel?
I think I can go right ahead. Thanks. I do have my pillars of emphasis that I alluded to in the opening statement, and we have long-term and we do have short-term issues. What I would like to see the city do is sort of address as promptly as we can some of the urgent issues of infrastructure, particularly the roads, really so we can go on to other aspects of community investment, including City Hall, which is really sort of a dangerous place, and we put children in there, and a new community center that houses the new public library that complies with modern standards of library science. So that really is what I'd like to do. The other challenge is a bit more of a regional challenge. We are part of a region that has focused development areas, and we just have to be very, very vigilant to make sure that whatever development is planned really does comply with Larkspur's small-town character, complies with our concerns about preserving a middle class. So that, to me, is a big issue. There is planned development in the Greenbray corridor, and I think that has other implications for the city of Larkspur that the city council will have to address quite immediately. And then there are the longer-term issues, with the longer-term issues of the environment and sea level rise. We just can't wait to address them. We have to do it now. I do favor, for example, horizontal levees toward the east part of the city.
Thank you, Daniel. And Catherine?
I think a key priority that we need to have, and I will focus on the city council, is to ensure Larkspur's financial strength. We sit in a very good position right now. The last councils and the current city manager and staff have done an excellent job, I believe, in really finding ways in which we can eliminate waste in our budget now and to try to consolidate some of our resources within the city. They've also done a very good job, I believe, in getting joint services agreements with some of our essential public service needs. So I would want to make sure we continue to look at ways that we can make our financial status better and also figure out ways to increase revenue. There's some terrific ideas out there in our community that we need to look at and embrace seriously. Second thing I'm interested in is to protect and improve Larkspur's core service needs. We have a Measure C on the ballot this year, which will provide funding, a half-cent sales tax funding to have enough revenue for repairing our core infrastructure, as in our roads, our bridges, and to protect public safety issues. I see that as an important thing that the city council will have to do, is have oversight onto that, and plus, to look at long-term planning needs for new structures and new infrastructure development. I'm very interested in supporting the Rose Garden Community Center Library project. I've done that kind of work before when I was on a school board in San Francisco where we raised $20 million in public-private financing to build a new science-building library and art studio for a school. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. And Kevin?
Thanks. Well, I think actually your question had two parts to it. One, what are the issues, and the other is why we're qualified to actually help address those things. So I want to talk about both of those things. There are two key issues, I think, that we need to confront, and they're largely short-term issues, but they have long-term implications. The first one is responding to growing pressures on growth and development within our community with a focus on what is happening in the vicinity of Larkspur Landing and the interchange between Highway 101 and Sir Francis Drake Drive. A lot of those pressures are regional in nature, some of them derived from planned Bay Area, and I have some real concerns about how those pressures have been evolving over time, particularly with respect to the PBA. There are concerns that I have about the transparency of the process that has been undertaken in order to develop those planning goals and assumptions, and I have some real questions about the extent to which they should be applied in our community. The second big issue is, of course, as everyone recognizes here, is ensuring the fiscal security for our community. The sales tax that is on the November ballot is important, but it's really frankly not enough, and we're going to have some very serious challenges over the next several years to identify different options to shore up the financial security of our city. We need to take a look at different options, including parcel taxes, in order to do that, but it's an important task, and we need to pursue it aggressively. Why I'm qualified to undertake those tasks?
We'll probably have to hear that next, yes. Sorry to keep it limited to 90 seconds. Okay, on the next question, we're going to start with Daniel, and that question is, what training and experiences have you had that will help you manage the city budget?
Well, I am a financial analyst by background and by training. I'm accustomed to sweating the details, but also synthesizing them. And the other thing is, part of being a financial analyst really had to do with the assessment of strategies, and when I say that, what I mean is, not only do we consider a snapshot of a situation in all of its detail, but we also project out to see what are the consequences of taking very various actions. I'm very experienced in modeling those kinds of things, and that's what I think I will bring as a specific skill to the city council. I am very, as I said in my opening statement, I'm very respectful of detail, and I do have long experience in applying it. At the same time, I'm very, very community-oriented. That is my concern. I'm concerned about the citizens. I'm concerned about the middle class. So I think what I would offer to the city and to the voters is really this combination of the rigorous skill, but also that very, very broad concern and empathy with the citizens.
Thank you, Daniel. And Catherine?
My background has not been in finance. My background is as a registered nurse. I have a bachelor's and a master's degree in that, but I recently started a business, a small business doing surgical expert witness, and I've learned how the business structure has worked with that. I have also been responsible for the budget and management of several large nonprofit organizations, one being the Redwood High School Foundation, which raises about $500,000 every year, and figuring out how you can cut and limit expenses while trying to maximize the ability to raise funds for a nonprofit is a very important role that I feel like I have skills in that. The second part in which I can bring some financial assessment to is a very organized and thoughtful approach to what all of the elements are that make up a good project. I think we need, as community leaders, to make sure we solicit the information, advice, and support of all the various communities when we seek ways in which we can better expend our public funds, and taking advantage of the knowledge base of our entire council that brings to it various backgrounds, and also many of the very involved community leaders in Larkspur-Greenbray who have a tremendous amount of experience and knowledge in finance and are very willing to participate and to help with our process. Lastly, I think one of our biggest community projects that we need to look at is the Rose Garden Development, which is a community center and a library. It'll be a very expensive project, and we need to look at opportunities to involve our business community and our private citizens.
Thank you, Catherine. And Kevin?
Well, I really appreciate that question because it gives me an opportunity to finish off the answer that I gave you in the previous question. Unlike Daniel, I don't have an extensive background in finance, but I do have an extensive background in law and in business. I have graduate degrees both in law and a master's degree in business administration from Cornell University, which have held me in good stead over the years. I've been a practicing attorney for my entire professional life, and most recently, I have become a small business owner. I'm the managing partner of the San Francisco office of a rapidly growing West Coast environmental and energy law firm, and I've been able, in that context, to apply the skills that I learned way back when, when I went to business school, in that context. I've also worked over many, many years with public agencies. I've represented a variety of different public agencies throughout the state of California, both here in Northern California as well as down south. So I have, I believe, a very good sense of how public agencies work, what the constraints that are imposed upon them in the context of budgeting and administration, and I think the main attribute that I have that I would like to be able to share with our community and in a role with the city council is a strong sense of public administration that I've learned over the years through those experiences. I think I have a very strong ability to do that, strong administrative skills, put the fiscal issues in the context of larger issues that we need to address as a community and be helpful in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. And Dan?
In the 20 years I've had the privilege of serving on the city council, the one thing I've learned is that previous background and experience, while certainly helpful, really doesn't prepare one to face the issues and the means by which we need to solve problems for our local governments because the circumstances are constantly changing. What I will say is that the spirit and experience of working together to resolve problems where even defining the problems are part of the hard work involved is key. Every year I've served on the city council, it's been a learning experience for me, facing new issues, and learning to find ways to work together, both with more of our neighboring communities as well as more of the various organizations within our community. Larkspur, for example, has a great tradition of working with our local school districts, not only to provide programs and support their services, but also to share in the investment, construction, and operation of facilities. One of the great achievements, I think, of one of the recent city councils, working with the Larkspur-Cortumadera School District, is the multi-use facility that exists now at Hall School, where the city of Larkspur and Cortumadera worked with the school district to build and maintain and operate that.
Thank you, Dan. Now, we're going to be able to ask a few questions that are specific to your communities, and we're going to start with Catherine. The school districts of Larkspur and Cortumadera are consolidated. Should the city and town consider a merger? What would be the benefits or the detriments of a merger?
Well, to clarify, we have the Larkspur-Cortumadera School District, which is our elementary and middle school, but we have the Tamil Pious Union High School District, which makes up a much larger area. So I'm looking, but the concept itself is something I think we really need to explore. I know we have a tremendous amount of similarity with Cortumadera as far as our communities, as far as our businesses, which are in many ways overlapping with each other. We share schools, we share roads, we share feeder and corridor areas in which our communities gather and drive through into, but we also have unique characteristics that are different for each of our towns. Larkspur has a historic downtown section of our business corridor, as well as a separation in our towns between Larkspur and the section of us, which is in Greenbray, by a creek. So we have a lot of issues that we would have to explore, but I think the possibility for looking at ways in which we can do more shared services is the first step. We've done a very good job in both of our towns in sharing the services of our police department and now adding into it the San Anselmo, city of San Anselmo, and having the Central Marin Police Department being able to show as a resource of how towns can work together and not only save $1.8 million between our three towns, but provide better services. I would like to explore more opportunities for sharing services, whether that eventually leads to a merger of the towns. We'll just have to get community feedback on that.
Thank you, Catherine. Kevin?
Well, that's an interesting question. I believe that consolidation and cooperation are desirable things and things that we should explore and pursue. I guess I come at that question from a little bit different perspective, in part because of the community that I live in. As I mentioned earlier, I've been a 10-year resident of Larkspur's Greenbray community, and our school district, at least the school district where I sent my daughter to school, is not the Larkspur-Cortumadera arrangement, but it's the Kentfield School District. I sent my daughter to elementary school at Basich, and she's currently enrolled at Kent Middle School. And a bigger concern for me personally, and I think for the people who live in my neighborhood, are working with the two school districts, or the different school districts that now exist, including the Kentfield School District, and making sure that we are providing our entire community with a broad range of services that we all are entitled to. You know, at a personal level, one of the frustrations my wife and I have had, working with the Kentfield School District, which is a terrific school district, and the schools there are wonderful, but in terms of after-school services that are provided right now at Kent Middle School, they are really lacking compared to what we see in some of our neighboring communities. And I think it's really important for us to work as community leaders to develop relationships with all the school districts that are serving our community collectively, to make sure that they're providing the services and support that we need for our children.
Thank you. And Dan?
With respect to the concept of merging local governments in the Twin Cities, this is an ongoing conversation that Larkspur and Cortumadera has with each other at the city council and administrative level, but it's also a conversation that, at least from Larkspur's point of view, we have with other surrounding neighboring communities as well. It's a natural that Larkspur and Cortumadera would find continuing and more frequent ways to provide services. I, myself, speaking only for myself, believe that it would be a very natural thing for the two local governments to merge into one set of operations. This would be very critical to distinguish this from protecting the community character and identity of Larkspur and Cortumadera within that concept, but I think it would be a very fascinating discussion to have, starting as soon as possible, between the two city and town councils, and also to find what manner would be most effective in which to put this question to the community. It would likely be something that voters could respond to, and describing the conditions under which merging more or all city, local government operations between the Twin Cities could take place. Before that, I think it'd be very important to get consensus at the staff level on the feasibility of such a proposal.
Thank you, Dan. And Daniel?
Thank you. I think the short answer to the question is combining services where it makes sense, and there are many instances of that. Yes. Merging the towns, particularly at this juncture, I would say probably not. There already are areas of coordination and cooperation, particularly with regard to public safety, and certainly for fire-related services, the nature of the terrain around us in Marin in general certainly lends itself to cooperation among various fire districts. The same thing for the police district, where we have a combined police force. The same thing also might apply to operations in the area of public work. So I see many, many areas where combinations could and should work profitably for both communities. There's a thin line, however, somewhere where combining services, getting economic leverage stops, and encroachment on sovereignty sort of starts, and I don't really believe that our community is quite prepared for that. The history of development in Cortumadera and Larkspur are rather distinct. Cortumadera has relied on malls and sales taxes and development for a large part of its economic development, and we have not. That really has somewhat dictated the contrasting nature of the two towns.
For our next question, we're going to start with Kevin. I think everyone is aware of the danger of fire. We're seeing it all over the country right now, and we happen to just started the National Preparation Month. Is Larkspur sufficiently prepared for a major fire, flood, or earthquake? If not, what needs to be improved, and how do you propose making changes? Who else would you involve? Kevin?
I don't think there is a single community in Marin County that is adequately prepared for facing all of those challenges, and I think Larkspur is among those. We have a terrific fire department in Larkspur. We have a terrific fire department in Larkspur. My family's had opportunities over the years to call upon the resources that they provide to us, and we have been very appreciative of everything that they've been able to do for us. I do think that there are opportunities to create efficiencies among the operations of the fire department in Larkspur and our surrounding communities. They already work together quite well in terms of delivering services, but I think there are improvements that could be made in doing that, which would translate into an improved capacity to respond to emergency conditions throughout all of Larkspur, Cort Madera, Kentfield, and even, to some extent, the unincorporated parts of Marin, including Kentfield and San Rafael. Flooding is, as much as anything, a big issue in the part of the community, the part of Larkspur where I live. During the winter times, pretty much every time it rains, we have to deal with the fact that Highway 101 is flooding, creates some significant risks to drivers and automobiles going through that corridor. I think we need to take a hard look at what we can do in the context of the Highway 101 interchange project to develop and respond more effective strategies to deal with that problem in particular.
Thank you. Dan?
On July 4th this past year, there was a fire that broke out in the Kent Woodlands community. I believe it was in the neighborhood of Rock Ridge Road. Eighty firefighters from varying fire agencies responded to deal with this fire, which I believe got, grew to the size of about an acre. Had that swift response, and this was at night, not taken place with this fire, we could have had a disaster, not unlike those that we have observed in other parts of the west, western states recently and in Yosemite. Marin County's fire agencies are highly organized with a mutual aid organization and fully supported by all the towns and cities that really provides a single unified response to a large-scale This takes place through the various shared service and mutual aid arrangements that towns and cities have with one another. So, in fact, we have regionalized our fire protection service to a degree. That's not to say there isn't more to do. Through various opportunities that show up in terms of attrition and the opportunities to share leadership, dispatch, communication services, we're headed toward a unified organizational structure in the county, I believe. It's just inevitable in a matter of time, much of which having to do with the various contracts and labor bargaining agreements that distinguish the various towns and cities. So it's just going to take time, but we're certainly all working together and focused on improvements. One of the, in the short term, I think technology can provide us some incredible advancement in the ability of our agencies to see in real time what we need to be watching in the county.
Thank you, Dan. Daniel?
I think that we are probably fairly strong on fire prevention and probably fairly strong on fire response, and probably somewhat weaker on the actual safety infrastructure in our town, particularly seismic safety. I talked to a couple of things. One, your city hall is dangerous. It's going to fall down. It's not going to be pretty. It's got to be fixed. It's got to be fixed now. And to claim that we're strong on disaster preparedness when we have a city hall which is in such disrepair really doesn't strike me as the proper thing. The second thing really has to do with roads, and as we do go out and repair our roads, what we really have to look to is the clearances for the fire trucks and also whether the canopy in those neighborhoods, particularly in the higher, in the more highly elevated neighborhoods, whether the tree canopy is sufficiently clear in order to strengthen our fire prevention. And the third thing goes to one of my pillars, which is global warming. We have an increased risk of drought. We've seen it all over the country. We're seeing it actually affecting the watershed, as well as we have more pest issues up there in the watershed due really to drought. And the drought issues are going to increase with global warming. It's why I think Larkspur should be leading, at the very least be leading by example as we address that issue.
Thank you, Daniel. Catherine?
Well, emergency preparation is a responsibility of everyone. It's the responsibility of our government in Larkspur and Greenbrey to prepare our cities, but it's also a responsibility of every resident who lives in Marin, particularly in the high-hazard fire zones where we live, in Larkspur and Greenbrey. And it's responsibility of every business. And I have felt that this was a very important part of what my opportunity to give to the city council would be. When I moved to Larkspur, I realized that there was no disaster preparation or plan in my neighborhood alone. So I started to initiate that and then got involved with the fire department as far as creating a community-wide disaster committee that worked on issues of preparation. Preparation for our citizens and for our businesses is very important. We have terrific programs in Marin already called Get Ready and things with FEMA for the federal level that can help us for this. And I think it's a very important responsibility of our city council is to continue to pursue the efforts to have our town and our citizens and our businesses plan, prepare, and mitigate for disasters. We are a tinderbox in Marin and almost one spark away from having the Morgan Fire, which is happening in Contra Costa County right now, and we all need to be realistic about that. So what it comes down to for what our city can do is to continue to have very strong public safety with our fire and our emergency services. We have a, one of our fire stations is in a crumbling city hall. That will need to be retrofitted for safety.
Thank you, Catherine. Our next question, we're going to start with Dan, and several of you have referenced the 101 interchange in your comments so far. A group called Marin Deserves Better has developed a plan for the Greenbrey Interchange on Route 101 as an alternative to the one that's been designed by TAM, the Transportation Authority of Marin. Which plan do you prefer?
I serve as Larkspur's representative to the Transportation Authority of Marin Board of Directors, and I also have served with Councilmember Brad Marsh on the Greenbrey Corridor 101 Working Group that has been appointed to advise the Transportation Authority of Marin on alternative solutions to those that, which were proposed in the Caltrans environmental documents known as the Build Project. Marin Deserves Better is a Larkspur-Cort Madera, central Southern Marin group of concerned citizens that have come forward to cooperate with the working group in exploring different alternatives to those proposed by Caltrans. Marin Deserves Better members have done a terrific job at making sure the local issues with respect to what truly causes congestion, for example, and what are short-term means by which we can reduce congestion, especially during peak traffic periods. What we've determined, myself included, working with this group, is that the bridge congestion from the Richmond-San Rafael Bridge is causing the 101 corridor congestion. As soon as we can get traffic off of East Sir Francis Drake Boulevard, the 101 congestion will be removed.
Thank you, Dan. Daniel?
Well, it's a very tricky question. Certainly, my sympathies and my allegiances, I would say, would go with the concerned citizens, and they have stressed a somewhat more integrated approach, including pedestrian flow, whereas the projects, the fully-designed projects for that corridor seem to, at least to me, they seem really to respond to very, very urban-style development preferences. And these do not seem adequate to me, and they certainly don't seem particularly well-integrated with other modes of moving people around, particularly in the area of public transit. The reason I'm a little bit cautious on this whole issue is that, on the one hand, we've got, we have a large agency coming a little bit from the outside to say, okay, this is what is going to be, going to be good for you. It doesn't really seem to tie to the character of Larkspur. At the other time, I'm a little bit wary of, all of us, including people like myself, playing a little bit instant expert, like, oh, this is how you're supposed to design an interchange. I think Dick Spotswood at the IJ recently came out with an editorial saying, you know, people that designed or implemented the new Bay Bridge are congratulating themselves, but really, you know, it took 24 years and went way over budget because so many amateurs got involved, and I don't want to see that happen here.
Thank you. Catherine?
I think we have agreement among all of the different parties that we have a big problem in that 101-Greenbrey interchange area. There are multiple plans that have been proposed and lots of different factors that are involved in coming up with a comprehensive and workable plan there. But I think we can all agree, we have to do something. It's not sustainable as it is, and it won't be sustainable for the next 10 years or 20 years, as we see both of our communities grow and as we see the transportation needs change all around us. Since I've declared my candidacy, I've been attending a lot of these meetings to get up to speed on what's happening and have paid attention to all the different proposals that are out there on the table right now, including the station area plan, which involves the entire development of the area post the 101-Greenbrey interchange, which will all be incorporated into that area as people traverse things between the ferry and the freeway and into the communities. So we have a lot of issues in that one narrow little section of our town, and we have a lot of competing interests. I'm not sure where it's going to go right now, but I think we're in the process of some very effective planning. I'm very pleased to see that community groups such as Marin Deserves Better and members of our communities in Cort Madera, Larkspur, and Greenbrey are coming out in force to really discuss this in detail and to put new proposals out on the table. It's still a work in progress. I have yet to commit to which one is better or the other. We have a lot more research to do and a lot more thoughtful analysis to do.
Thank you, Catherine. And Kevin?
I think the answer to your question is neither, to the short one at least. You know, I appreciate the involvement, as I think everyone here does, of local interest groups like Marin Deserves Better to call into question plans that have been proposed by larger agencies that don't necessarily quite have the pulse of our community. But I don't think either of those options are necessarily the correct solution, and I have to follow along with Dan and some of his comments, that we need to take a hard look at exactly what is coming off the San Rafael-Richmond Bridge and how that is really driving the concerns and problems that we have with 101 and that interchange. You know, I've been a part of the Citizens Advisory Committee for the Station Area Plan, and we've been taking a lot of hard look at traffic and congestion issues in that context. And one of the things that I've been struck by in going through that process is the lack of coordination in planning between the Highway 101 project, the smart station area train planning area project, and other planning activities that are going around within our community. I've also been shocked by the lack of sophistication, frankly, with some of the traffic analyses that have been done by some of the consultants that we've been working with to try to evaluate these options. So again, the answer is neither. I think we need to take a hard look at all of these issues and do so in the context of a more coordinated planning process.
Thank you, Kevin. Our next question, we'll start with Daniel. What is your position on design and amount of affordable housing? And what are your views on meeting the state mandates? How obligated are cities to meet those mandates?
The mandates for towns like Larkspur, to be perfectly frank, I think they are, I think they're manageable. I don't think that they're necessarily excessive either. So the devil really is in the detail of implementation. And I think that we can and should tolerate or even encourage certain forms of density which would be conducive to more affordable forms of housing. So I'm definitely in favor of mixed use between retail and residential in certain areas of the town. That's been the model in Europe, for example, for centuries. And also, we do have a fairly nice community of moderately-priced housing in the Larkspur Landing area today, and that could also serve as a model for other areas of the city. So I think that we probably can meet the requirements. I think the goal was 382 new dwellings by 2014. I think that goal is manageable, and I think it behooves us, in order to protect the middle class, to try to abide by that.
Thank you. Catherine?
I think it's really important that our community leaders continue to assess ways in which we can support our working families and, as Daniel was saying, our middle-class community members. We have a very confined geographic space in Larkspur. We're surrounded by a mountain on one side and the bay on the other, so there's not a lot of room for making large multi-unit dwellings. We do have a lot of our residents, probably in the 40% range, who live already in existing apartment structures, and they live in multi-unit dwellings, as in condominiums and townhouses in our lower Greenbrey and Bon Air Hills area. I've also spent a lot of time in the last couple of weeks exploring what our Larkspur Landing community looks like, where we have a lot of multi-residential area there. There is some room for growth in that area perhaps, and maybe some other more creative ways in which we can look at affordable housing with units that are developed around our commercial spaces, above or below some of our commercial spaces. But I think it's important that we continue to always see ways in which we can support our community at all various levels. As far as the growth numbers, I've done a lot of research into what ABAG and the growth numbers and other things about affordable housing have brought to Larkspur. And I'm really concerned that we are a unique community, not only in our characteristic but in our geographic land requirements that we have, that perhaps those numbers are not going to be feasible for us in Larkspur and Greenbrey area. And I would like to continue to explore, as a council, how we can relate to that and come up with a really workable plan for Larkspur and Greenbrey.
Thank you, Catherine. Kevin?
I think we're all in agreement here today that provision of affordable housing is an important goal that we need to work hard and trying to achieve for our community. And I think the issue is really how to do it and where to do it. I share Catherine's concerns about some of the analysis that's been done by some of the regional agencies to set numbers and whether those numbers are, in fact, really appropriate for the specific character of the community that we live in, in Larkspur. But more of a concern, frankly, to me, living again in Greenbrey, where we do have probably the highest stock of affordable housing within the city, there's going to be a tendency to really look at the area in Greenbrey in close proximity to Highway 101 and to the areas that have been developed or can be developed within the Larkspur Landing area as the way to place all of that housing in a high-density setting. Again, not opposed to affordable housing. I'm in favor of it. I think it's important. But I'm very concerned about creating opportunities for development that would fundamentally alter the character of our community. We've seen some very high-intensity development going on right adjacent to Larkspur in Cort Madera, construction going on there right now. There will be opportunities to replicate that kind of experience in Larkspur Landing that have already been proposed and will be considered both by the Planning Commission and by the city council. And I'm very concerned about a tendency towards development and urbanization of our community as a result of those efforts.
Thank you, Kevin. And Dan?
The affordable housing question has been one characterized in different ways since I've been on the Larkspur City Council for the last 20 years. It was one of the first things that I encountered when I attended my first Planning Commission meeting. There was an affordable housing project that was being characterized by proponents as necessary to provide opportunities for working families to live in our community, and it was characterized by opponents as containing many negative characteristics, undesirable, and degrading to our quality of life in Larkspur. That argument, it's interesting to see that continuing 20 years later, under different labels and with different voices. My observation is that Larkspur has always been a wonderful community that has a range of ages, incomes, and different backgrounds of residents and families. And it's a terrific place to raise families for that very reason. We have always been able to balance the state and county requirements for providing housing for opportunities at various income levels. I see no reason why we can't continue I see no reason why we can't continue to find ways to do that, as it is very critical to the character of our community.
Thank you, Dan. We're running fairly short on time, but I have one more question. If you could maybe just take 60 seconds to answer it. Larkspur has a ballot measure, Measure C. Are you supporting it? Why or why not? And let's start with Catherine.
Larkspur's ballot Measure C will be on the November 5 ballot, and I believe it's a very important opportunity for us to continue to fund our infrastructure. I sat on an ad hoc committee on Larkspur's essential service needs this last spring with some very informed members of our community, and we had very intense discussions about what this Measure C would do as far as what our needs were in the community, as far as pavement repair and removing and mitigating hazardous materials of vegetation that is in our community and improving our public safety responses. And we had a lot of discussion about what it would mean to our business community as far as the influence it may have upon consumers. But I really feel that we need, as a city, to figure out ways in which we can continue to fund our public roads and our public infrastructure needs, and Measure C is the first step in that. It may not be enough, and we may need to pursue other things in the future.
Thank you, Catherine. Kevin?
I support it, and I've gone on record that I support it. I think that the city council and backing away from the one cent sales tax proposal that was originally out there was wise. It puts our community kind of in line with all of the other communities that are considering sales tax increases. I don't personally like sales taxes. I think they're regressive in many respects, but I think it's important for us to maintain a par with our communities, and I don't think that the sales tax that is being proposed and is on the table today is going to create relative negative impacts to our business community. But the bottom line is, it's not enough. I've seen some of the studies and some of the analysis that's been done about what the kind of revenues that that tax will generate. We have fiscal demands in our community that far outpace the revenues that are going to be generated by that tax measure. So we need to be realistic and prepare ourselves to revisit that issue and be creative, again, in looking at alternatives going down in the future.
Thank you. Dan?
Improvements to residential streets has always been a desirable part of Larkspur's capital infrastructure and project improvement plan. Unfortunately, we don't have a revenue stream, as most Marin towns and cities have directed toward improvement of local residential streets. Through grant funding and other state, federal, and county revenue sources, we have revenue streams that we can use to repair collector streets and streets that go through our community. But with respect to residential streets, we've never had a revenue stream to focus on those improvements. Measure C will allow us to do that with citizen oversight. It's a five-year tax, one-half percent sales tax. This is not going to be enough to fix all of the streets. This is the first step. We want to show that we can work with the community, and with citizen oversight, we can use this as a success to move toward a comprehensive approach.
And Daniel?
Yeah. I'm also on record as endorsing the measure, and I do agree with Kevin that it's not the ideal thing, but we cannot let the good be the enemy of the, rather, perfect be the enemy of the good. So I definitely support it. I ran a couple of numbers against those incremental tax revenues, and what appeared to me is that $750,000 roughly in added revenues to the city would probably be sufficient to service about $6 million in a 10-year bond and roughly $10 million in a 20-year bond with realistic interest rates. So if you contrast that with what's actually needed to repair the streets, repair city hall, build a community center, it's not quite enough. But it is a first step, and I absolutely am going to support it and look for different ways to actually leverage it. If we're talking about the library, a subject which is dear and dear to me, there are things that you can do to show, well, look, the city has stepped forward, but now we can do other things to increase that amount.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you. I only have 14 more questions, but we don't have time for those. A different debate. Before the candidates make their closing statement, I want to give you some important dates. Election Day is Tuesday, November 5. The last day to register to vote is October 22, two weeks before the election or to re-register if you've moved since you last voted. Requests for absentee ballots must be received by the Elections Department by October 28, one week before the election. Early voting opens at the Civic Center, Room 121, October 7. If you go to the League's smartvoter.org website and enter your street and address and zip code, you'll be able to see your own ballot. It links you to the candidates, issues, ballot measures, and information about the voting process itself. In addition, our website, Marin, L-W-V dot org, has many other online resources for voters to research facts and campaign financial information. Now the candidates will make closing statements of 1.5 minutes, 90 seconds, and we're going to start with Catherine.
Thank you, and thank you to the viewers who have paid attention to these very important community television opportunities to learn about the candidates. I moved to Larkspur almost 10 years ago, and I found a jewel of a town. I love living in Larkspur. It's an incredibly livable place to be, to raise a family, to have a business, to attend the schools, to venture into our outdoor spaces, our parks, to ride bikes. It's a really terrific place, and we are situated in a really good spot right now to move forward into our next century. We celebrated our 100th birthday as a town in 2008, and now we face the challenges of the next century, but I think we're in a very good position to do that. We need leadership who will seek input from the community and who will embrace all the aspects of our community, from our residences to our businesses, to our schools, to our people who work in our town and may live in another part of Marin. We need thoughtful, community-based approaches to solving many of these problems, and we need to include all of the residents, and I intend to do that if I'm elected to city council, to make sure we embrace all of the residents of Larkspur and Greenbrier and have them participate in the process. Lastly, I'm the next generation of community leader. I have been humbled to be asked by many community members to run for this role because they know I can get things done. They know I have a personality and an intellect that allows me to branch out into a majority of our community. And I'm also humbled that the women in the real leadership roles in Larkspur, who have historically been very important in our community, are supportive of me because I want to follow in their footsteps.
Thank you, Catherine. Daniel?
Thank you again for hosting this event and for your thoughtful questions. What I appreciate the most about Larkspur is how our citizens, aided by the history of the town, have avoided the pitfall of a hollowed-out middle class and have resisted overwrought urban development. We do have that down-home, small-town feel. We do have an idyllic setting. We do have a vibrant downtown area and a vibrant Larkspur Landing area. We do have a cohesive community. We are family-friendly. We are senior-friendly. What I would like to do as your city council member is preserve and build upon these features. That is why I have emphasized community investment, municipal finance, preservation of our town's character, and the environment as my pillars of emphasis. I believe I have the skills, the habits of mind, the habits of heart, the energy to execute on these issues. So I welcome your support in this election. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan?
I've had the pleasure of serving on the Larkspur City Council for over 20 years. I currently serve in other roles as well, such as I serve as the president of the Ross Valley Paramedic Authority, and I currently serve as a commissioner to the Bay Conservation Development Commission as an alternate representing the North Bay Counties to that regional agency. I believe my background, both on the city council and serving the city of Larkspur in these larger regional roles, provides me with a unique vision and unique experience that will be very helpful to the council as it continues to help the city through its growing pains, which I believe we're in the middle of a 30-year period of growing pains here in the city with respect to learning how to manage our historic downtown, how to handle areas of newer developments, and transportation, such as the Greenbrier Corridor and the Larkspur Ferry Terminal area. We also have a train project that is going to be moving toward Larkspur with terminus at the ferry landing area. So we have many urban issues for our little semi-rural or semi-suburban community to face in the next few years, and I believe my experience both on the council and professionally as a city planner will be very helpful to guide the city through those changes.
Thank you, Dan. And Kevin?
I also want to thank the League of Women Voters today for sponsoring this event. It's a great opportunity for us to introduce ourselves to our community and a great opportunity for all of us to learn more about our respective positions on some very important issues. The most important issue from my perspective facing our community is dealing with the pressures that we have to face on development. That is particularly acute in the community, the part of Larkspur that I live in, and I think it's important to have someone representing that community play a role in responding to those concerns. But on a personal note, yesterday I spent some time in conferences with my daughter's teachers at Kent Middle Schools, talking about the challenges that she faces there as a beginning sixth grader. And it was fun and reminded me a lot of all the things that I learned about life when I was her age, about science, about history, about social studies, and about civics. I have told my daughter that those things will stick with her for the rest of her life and manifest themselves later on in ways that she cannot now even imagine. I'm here today because I do remember those lessons, and I appreciate the importance of giving back what I've learned to the community that has meant so much to me as an adult. I hope today's conversation has been helpful to all of you listening in, watching, and I want to thank my fellow candidates for participating in today's event, and I wish everyone well in this November's election.
Thank you, Kevin. This concludes our broadcast for the Larkspur City Council. On behalf of the League, I would like to thank all four of you for stepping forward. This is democracy in action, and we really appreciate it. And thank you to the viewers, and please vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.